Like to call the regular board meeting for August tenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. This time, if you'll stand for prayer, I will do the prayer and Coach Gannus will do the pledge to the flag. Heavenly fathers, we come before you this afternoon. First, we want to thank you for all your many blessings. Lord, we ask that you form a education around all of our employees, especially our students and staff, from superintendent on down. Lord, we will always give you the praise for all your many blessings, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You join me for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number four, approve the agenda. Superintendent, no changes, all right? You've had a chance to look over that since Monday night. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move second.
All right, we have Coach Gannus made the motion and Mr. Tyre made the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right. Um, Superintendent? All right, we'll skip down to item number six, presentations.
Tonight, we have Dr. Lynn Barber, CTA Director and Assistant Superintendent. He will come forward to recognize some of our state winners. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
It is good to see y'all tonight, and it's always good to stand here when we have some good things to recognize. And we have several students and teachers who were recognized on the state level, and we want to honor them tonight, and we appreciate you taking the time to recognize them. I'm gonna do these in groups by their program area. In the first program, we want to recognize tonight as our work-based learning and youth apprenticeship program. We have several students that we track after high school, and we keep up with their hours. Ms. Callahan does that through the youth apprenticeship program. And the students that I'm about to call out earned at least seven hundred and twenty hours of work credit beyond high school and have earned either a post-secondary degree or certificate. Now, I want to call their names tonight. Several of these are not here, Mr. Smith, and you don't have these in front of you. Marie Sultan, Coleman Dixon, Mary Lennon Bates, Hinkley Hood, and Carly Ray. They are not with us tonight. Zariah Phillips, I think is here, is that correct?
Zariah.
Okay. But those students, to give you an idea of what our students are accomplishing after high school, just wanted to recognize them for being honored on the state level for achieving that youth apprenticeship award. We have one of those, though, that was the state winner. So Ms. Callahan submits students for recognition each year, and I want to read this to you because I thought it was really good. Cassidy Moore was chosen as the Southeast Region Youth Apprenticeship Completers of the Year at the annual G A C T E conference. Cassidy graduated from Ware County High School in 2017 with honors, where she was a well-rounded student, participated in various pathways and organizations. She completed the business pathway, part of the healthcare pathway, was in FBLA and Beta and several other organizations, also completed a foreign language pathway, which she says has been very beneficial in the, in the medical field. When she entered the work-based learning program and youth apprenticeship program, she became a paid office assistant, earning four segments of completion during high school. And that helped her choose a career in healthcare. After high school, she attended South Georgia State College, transferred after that to Georgia Southern University to complete her Bachelor of Science in Nursing. She passed her N C L E X upon graduation, earning her registered nursing credential. Cassidy is currently in her first year working as a registered nurse in pediatrics and is accomplishing wonderful things as she has been awarded the Daisy Award four times from East Georgia Regional Medical Center. Cassidy received her acceptance to the Doctorate of Nursing Program at Georgia Southern to begin in the fall. This will allow her to continue to expand her experience and knowledge to provide the best care for her patients. Cassidy plans to become a nurse practitioner after the completion of this next degree. She is now Cassidy Moore King, B S N R N, and a true success story of the Georgia Youth Apprenticeship Program. Cassidy is married to Charles King and is the daughter of Cheryl Moore and Carl Moore. So we have a certificate. Cassidy, if you want to come on up, and also Ms. Callahan, if you would present this to her. We also have a scholarship at the state level. They present a scholarship for her being the state winner, and the Ware County Youth Apprenticeship Program matches that. So Ms. Callahan is presenting that to her tonight, so congratulations on that award. So again, I think it's always great when we can see where our students go beyond high school, whether it's straight into the workforce or onto college and then to a career. Secondly, tonight, we want to recognize our VEX and TSA robotics teams, and we're going to recognize some key members of those of the TSA and Swamp Robotics, VEX Robotics team for their exemplary accomplishments throughout the last school year. The students being recognized tonight, if you'd come forward as I call your name and stand by Mr. Smith. Maddox Grover, who was the team captain, programmer, and chief robot driver, and top fundraiser. Connor Chapman, who's the TSA president, chief robot builder, programmer, and a driver spotter on that team. Kent Taylor, who is a member of the PIK crew, the logistics competition scout, and a major fundraiser for this group. And lastly, Evan Smith, PIK crew member, logistics and materials and travel coordinator. Brown, if you'll come on up and stand with them, I want to read you what they accomplished. These four young men have taken the Ware County Robotics Team to the highest possible level of competition this year at both the VEX Robotics Events and TSA Competitions. Here's what their accomplishments include. Winning four tournament championships and regular season competition, winning two Robot Skills Awards, winning the Robotics Design Award, qualifying for both the VEX State Championship and TSA State Championship, and then qualifying for the VEX Worlds Championship, winning first place in robotics at the TSA State Championship and qualifying for the TSA National Event. So these young men in the past few months competed in two, or one national and one world competition. The world competition had over approximately eighty teams there, and they did quite well with this being their first time there. And at the TSA Nationals, their final ranking was sixteenth out of fifty teams. So Mr. Holland Brown, their advisor, here with them tonight. All right, congratulations, guys. We are proud of you. The next two students cannot be here tonight, but I did want to recognize them briefly. Two FFA members, Grayson McFall, he's a rising junior. This past year, he was the state champion in the FFA Tracker Operations and Maintenance Career Development Event. At just fifteen years old, Grayson was one of the youngest members to win this award. Not only did Grayson successfully operate equipment efficiently, but diagnosed and successfully completed problem-solving on multiple pieces of equipment. Grayson rounded out the competition by testing his knowledge on agricultural equipment. Roughly one hundred participants started in this competition area across the state, narrowed down to twelve at the state level, and Grayson was named the state winner. So he's an active member in the Ag Mechanics Pathway, also does electrical wiring and welding, and a good example of the skills being taught in that pathway. And then this next student actually moved into college today and could not be here, graduated last year. Colleen Barber, another state winner through FFA. I'm kind of proud of this one, too. Colleen has competed in prepared public speaking each year since sixth grade through FFA. Last year, she placed second in state, and this year tried it again, and much like Grayson, about a hundred students started in that level across the state, and she, she made it to the top finals and won at the state level. So Colleen will now represent Georgia at the National Public Speaking Competition in Indianapolis in November with her speech on country of origin labeling on red meat. All right, and last but not least, speaking of state winners, we'd also like to recognize our high school agriculture teachers for their state recognition. The Georgia Vocational Agriculture Association recognized the Ware County High School Ag Education Program as the outstanding middle and high school secondary agriculture program in the state this July. And additionally, Ms. Lissy Chisholm on that team was named Georgia's Teachers Turned a Key Winner and Award for those in their first five years of education, and Lissy is now a national finalist in this award area. So I would like to call our Ag Department up, Mr. Jay Bennett, Ms. Lissy Chisholm, Mr. Alex Chisholm, and Mr. Eric Hickox to congratulate them on their program being named the outstanding program in the state. Well, thank y'all. Mr. Smith, I think Zariah is here. If we could, if we could recognize her, Zariah? Where's she at? Okay, come on up, Zariah. Zariah was one of those youth apprenticeship students who completed those seven hundred and twenty hours beyond high school and has been recognized on the state level. So congratulations again. We'll get a picture with Ms. Callahan. Well, thank y'all for allowing us to take the time to do that. It's always great to have statewide recognition for our students and programs, and so thank you again.
Good job.
Thank you, Dr. Barber. All right, Golden Achievement Award.
As a presentation for our Golden Achievement Awards for Ruskin.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Smith, our visitors. Ms. Selena Thomas, come on up. Selena Thomas is an outstanding paraprofessional. She is a very dedicated worker and is a beacon of light in our Ruskin Jaguar family. She does not wait to receive assignments and is proactive, or when she sees the need, she will tackle it. She works hard with students to help them with their phonics, reading, and math skills. She values that students need an education and works intensely to make improvements. Mrs. Thomas has been a role model for new paraprofessionals who come to Ruskin. She helps to train them in any way needed. She is the epitome of, although it's not my job, you know what I'm talking about? You know, it's not my job. I don't mind assisting because it's everybody's job, okay? She is an awesome team player. One special project she has taken on is to close closets. With resources being thrown into the room until someone can properly attend to the items, she embraces the task and keeps the closet manageable. One special role she plays, we really cannot say, but Jiggy the Jaguar mascot is one is one of her prized Hollywood roles. Keeping a secret now, okay? You will hear her most of the time before you see her, and that southern drawl is one of a kind and will never be mistaken for anyone else in the building or Waycross. So with that, let's hear it for Ruskin's Classified Golden Achievement Winner for August twenty twenty-three, Ms. Selena Thomas.
All right, Ms. Trogden. She's nervous. Come on. Don't be nervous, you're a Jaguar.
That's right.
Come on down, the price is right.
That's right.
Mrs. Trogden works unconditionally to find effective solutions and best teaching practices to meet the needs of the gifted and talented students she serves.
Don't you cry.
She knows her learners and creates conditions for them to excel. She is trained to identify and teach students from a very, from varied backgrounds and goes beyond, above and beyond to support Ruskin's staff and students. She collaborates with grade-level teams regarding the enrichment of students, supports teachers by providing instructional resources and strategies using her creativity. Due to her extensive child find processes, Ruskin has approximately sixty gifted students, which is amazing knowing the low socioeconomic status of the school. And while I often, thank you, and while I often tease her with the phrase, you're not doing any work, it is apparent that she, in all actuality, works hard in assuring the gifted program exceeds the standard. It is a pleasure to honor Ms. Libby Trogden as Ruskin Certified Golden Achievement Award Winner.
Congratulations.
Everybody's got to hear me say it, ask Selena, so that that's right.
Congratulations to both of our Golden Achievement winners as well as our state students, student winners, as well as our state Ag teachers as well. All right, Superintendent?
Yes, sir. Recommend for approval, payroll and disbursements over July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and the total amount of six million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars and one cent. And the financial report was given Monday night. Of course, the enrollment report, you see, there is a, I think you received that today in email as well. There's a hard copy of today's first day count. Calendar dates, of course, day was the first day of school. Labor Day's coming up. I've made it all the schools today. Everything seemed to be going well. I know first few days, transportation's always an issue with car riders and bus riders. We'll get that cleaned up. But overall, every principal saying they had a great day, and it was just, just good to see everybody back in the buildings and just a lot of good stuff going on. So very proud of our, our schools, very proud of our students, and just everyone that's involved. I think we're gonna have a great year. We have a good plan in place. I'm looking forward to our retreat to discuss other, other items and how we're gonna tackle this thing. So one other thing, since this is my report, Ms. Waters, Coach Gannus, and Mr. Tyre, yesterday at the high school, we did look at the weapons detection system. If it's okay with the board, I would like to get with the safety coordinators at the high school and both middle schools to come up with a plan of how we could actually utilize that and bring that back to y'all. And then that way, we, if there's, we've already got a price on it for four lanes at the high school and two lanes at both middle schools. So four lanes at the high school, be two at the main entrance gated in, and then two at the bus lane, and then two at both middle schools. So, and that safety grant money would cover the cost of all of it. So there is a, so again, get with y'all and have a introduce that plan once we meet with those coordinators, if that's okay. I don't have anything for tonight because y'all saw it. I don't know if y'all have any comments on that.
And it was, I think it's something very worthwhile and following up on.
Right, right.
I liked it because it's mobile. I liked it because it can use it around. I think it's gonna be more of a turret than, you know, not a gotcha thing.
Right.
Something we can do in a relatively inexpensive, not that it comes out of the money, but expensive, but it would give us a thing that we could put them out. It's kind of like the drug dollars. You never know where it's gonna be. You never know when it's gonna pop up.
Right.
And it could be used all around the schools, and I liked that from the, from that standpoint, it can be flexible.
And I'd like to say thank you to our governor for giving the safety money to each school district, each school district.
I agree. I thought the product was economical and it will be efficient. People can walk right through it, and it doesn't require a lot of resources to manage the person, the students coming through. So I think it's a very nice product.
And we also had visitors from the sheriff's office, the city police, also from Brantley and Pierce Counties going over to watch it as well. So it was, it was not just a Ware County thing, it's a community, several communities in our area. So also, last thing I have is the centralized registration update. Thank you, Ms. Coker, on this. It kind of gives you an idea of what's, what's happening. Y'all have this, just, okay, never mind, I thought, I'm sorry. Anyway, we have two hundred and seventy-seven folks have come and registered in centralized registration. We've approved one ninety-nine of those. They're still missing documentation on forty-one. Two have been denied, and thirty-five are waiting for review. So it's beginning of school, it's worked out well. There were long lines at these schools, and that made it a little more manageable for people sitting and waiting around. So appreciate the ladies in our centralized registration. They've done a great job, and we're gonna, we'll get better and better each day, finding things that we can improve on, but at the same time, I think we've had a good start with our centralized registration.
Good, yeah.
You've heard the superintendent's report items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move. Second it.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number eight, approval of minutes of the meetings. You've had a chance. We talked, mentioned it to you Monday night, considering the July seventeenth and July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three work session and board meetings. Do I have a motion from, to approve the minutes of those meetings?
So move.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Superintendent?
Yes, recommend for approval, CTA Director requests to seek approval for the FY twenty-four local plan for CTAE. The CTAE local application contains all federal Perkins Five related grants, as well as the local system assurances to meet the grant requirements. A two-year comparison of all federal and state grants is provided. These grants, along with local support, allow for the improvement and sustainability of industry-recognized CTA programs.
All right, you heard the recommendation from the superintendent to have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, Mr. D's made the motion. He's on the phone.
He's on the phone. You gotta give him a minute.
Mr. D has made the motion, and who was the second?
Coach Gannus.
Coach Gannus, I should have known. So there's, all right, any discussion about that?
I think you see the, what CTA brings to Ware County tonight, so you see all the rules and teachers and everything, so.
All right, I heard Mr. D's split second before I heard Ms. Nelson's. There being no more discussion, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right, item number ten.
Yes, recommend for approval, the memorandum of understanding between the Ware County Board of Education and Unison Behavioral Health for Behavioral Health Services.
Heard recommendation from Superintendent to have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion this time, and Coach Gannus seconded again. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. All right, Superintendent, item number eleven.
Yes, recommend for approval, the foster transportation plan for the FY twenty-four school year.
All right, heard recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move. Second it.
All right, Ms. Waters made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Superintendent, item number twelve.
Yes, recommend for approval, the Capitol Outlet Project Application for Waycross Middle School.
Heard recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move.
Second it.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion. Ms. Nelson seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Number thirteen, Superintendent?
Yes, recommend for approval, the twenty-three, twenty-four local board training plan for the Ware County School Board members.
Heard recommendation of Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Etheridge made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number fourteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, request for direct transportation to purchase four two thousand twenty-three Bluebird Vision gas buses at a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty-seven dollars each for a total of five thirty-eight, two sixty-eight. The state is reimbursing eighty-eight thousand, one hundred per bus for a total of three hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. The funding source should be specified, Ms. Cherry.
Okay, okay. Heard the recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move. Second.
All right, Coach Gannus made the motion. Mr. Tyre seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Superintendent, item number fifteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, request for bridge to success students to submit a proposal to speak at the two thousand twenty-four South Atlantic ACT Summit on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four Clemson University in South Carolina. Students will be transported by Ware County School Activity Bus and stay the duration of the conference and return the following day. The program is prepared to raise its own funds for travel and lodging through fundraisers and corporate sponsorships, with the remainder being paid by each participant. However, we request that the payment of the conference fees be paid through school program funding.
Okay, heard the recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move. Second it.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Ms. Etheridge seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number sixteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, the fundraisers at Wacona, Wearsboro, Ware County Middle, Waycross Middle, and Ware County High School.
Heard recommendation, Superintendent, to hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, Coach Gannus made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number seventeen.
Yes, recommend for approval, request for use of Ware Middles all touring and gym lobby on February twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-four for Jehovah's Witnesses Bible study classes at usual customary fees. The request was made by Mark Ryers.
Heard recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right. Coach Gannus made the motion. Mr. Tyre made second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number eighteen, as far as I know, there's no need for executive session. All right, nineteen.
Yes, recommend for approval, request of Director of Student Services Special Education to add parapropositions to Waycross Middle School and Ware County High School. The positions will be funded through PBE at this time.
Okay, you heard recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So.
So move. Second.
All right, Ms. Nelson made the motion. Tyre seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-six.
Yes, sir, I guess we can do this as a consideration.
Yes, maybe.
Maybe, send the recommend for approval of special education contract, contracts and some items A through D as presented.
Heard recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move. Second.
All right, we had Mr. Tyre made the motion. Coach Gannus seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Superintendent, item number twenty-one.
Yes, recommend for approval, request for internships in the Ware County School District.
All right, heard recommendation, Superintendent, to have a motion?
So move. Second it.
All right, we had a motion from Ms. Etheridge and a second from Ms. Nelson. Any discussion?
On, on this, the next, actually, the next two items, these are gonna be a blanket recommendations for internships instead of bringing recommendations for internships instead of bringing kids every time there's an intern. So this will, they still have to go through a background check and kind of all that kind of stuff. So instead of bringing kids every time or whomever every time, this will take care of that because they still have to go through the same qualification no matter what.
Yeah, all right. There being no more discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-two.
Yes, recommend for approval, the request for chaperones in the Ware County School District.
All right, heard recommendation, superintendent, this is a blanket.
Yes, sir.
Recommendation, to have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, Coach Gainis made the motion. Ms. Waters seconded. Any discussion?
And again, this was like, you know, the three that we tentatively approved, that would cover that. So again, they're not getting paid, they're just, and go through the background check and make sure everything is clean before they start.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-three.
Yes, recommend for approval, the personnel report in some items A, B, and C as presented.
All right, heard recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion?
So move. Second.
All right, Mr. Tyre made the motion. Mr. Gainis, Coach Gainis seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Item number twenty-four, Superintendent.
Yes, recommend for approval, the organizational chart for Ware County Schools.
Heard recommendation, superintendent, to have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, Mr. Coach Gainis made the motion. Mr. Tyre seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
No.
Okay. All right, that leads us to other, Ms. Nelson, do you have any other, other?
Other, other? Just want to say, I'm so glad to know that everybody went back to school safe this morning and made it back home safe this afternoon. We know COVID is on the rise. We're wearing our masks only for protection for you, so we, we just don't have COVID, but thank you, Jesus. But just been a little exposure for everybody to be safe and know that we need to get back to using our hand sanitizers, and we all have been spoiled by not using the mask, including myself, but we all need to be careful with our children this year, and that's all.
All right, Ms. Etheridge?
Open house. I didn't make it to all of them because I talked too much, but the ones that I did, I really enjoyed it, and every school, I'm coming.
Yeah. That was a crowd where I just was able to make it, wear a medal, that's, that have my, all my strength back, but anyway, there were parents and kids everywhere there, so I'm sure it was like.
I started it too. I ain't go with others. That's massive.
Okay, Mr. Tyre?
Oh, I'm going to just echo what they said about the open house. I, I made it to five schools, which it took all my time to do that. We just can't get to all of them. I hope principals understand.
They're just too spread out.
But they were really well planned, and the schools were beautiful, they were clean. I was just really impressed with it.
I see my face in the floor.
I do want to say, with all this heat that we're having, I want to urge our students and faculty to hydrate, drink water, like Coach Gainis is doing right now.
Well, we did, Ms. Coker did send out an advisory to all the principals today, so in case of recess or anything outside, we're going to keep them inside in case, in case it gets too hot.
Okay, Coach Gainis?
Just like to, you know, say, congratulations to everybody getting back, and have a great school year. We've got a long way to go and a lot of things to do, and we just look forward to taking down that road and taking it one day at a time and doing the best we can do each day. And I want everybody to be safe and, you know, and have a good year.
Ms. Waters?
I also enjoyed going to three open houses this week. A lot of positive energy, and I echo that they were well organized. And then I hope everyone had a wonderful first day. I know my two littles did. And when I think about this year, and I've been praying over this year, success is the word that comes to mind, and tonight was an example of that. I'm very proud of our students and staff who were recognized tonight. Couldn't be more prouder of their success.
All right, Superintendent, I would just like to echo what everybody else said, that it's just, success is what it's all about there. Mr. Dees, did you have anything? Apparently not.
I agree with all the rest of them.
All right.
Good deal.
Mr. Start, say Coach Dees. Mr. Dees, Mr. Dees said that he agrees with everybody else's comments there.
Well, like I said earlier, Ms. Waters talked about, that's why we're here.
That's true.
Not just those kids, all kids, but that's what you're here for, to give those kids an opportunity to achieve what they want to achieve.
Yes.
There used to be a song, "Nothing succeeds like success," and that's true. It tends to breed itself and just continues the success. At this time, I'd like to read the August 2023 condolences. Ms. Sherry Cowart, teacher at Wacona in the loss of her father-in-law Leon Curtis Cowart Senior; Brooke Dial, teacher at Wacona in the loss of her father-in-law Kenny Dial; Jessica Carter, teacher at Center Elementary in the loss of her mother-in-law Ms. Mary Carter, who taught at Wacona and Memorial Drive Elementary, and was the wife of longtime Memorial Drive Principal Wade Carter; Melissa Herring, co-teacher at Ware County Middle School in the loss of her grandfather-in-law Boyce Crawford; Caitlin Thigpen, special ed coordinator at Wacona Elementary; and Madison Robin, special education facilitator at Memorial Drive and Daffodil, in the loss of their grandfather, grandfather-in-law Lauren Arnold; Robin Carter, paraprofessional at Williams Heights Elementary, in the loss of her brother Steve White Senior; Amber Thomas, teacher at Daffodil, in the loss of her husband Matt Thomas; Shirley Gordon, co-teacher at Ruskin, in the loss of her aunt Ella Shanks; the family and friends of Oscar Bell, former Ware County School Board Member; and the family and friends of Cheryl Murray, former bus driver for Ware County Schools. Our thoughts and prayers go to all of these who have lost loved ones. There being no other business, I declare this meeting adjourned.
Hold on, we'll go into strange, Ms. Coker. That way we're still doing, doing something. Interview's not over. There we go.